That's important.
It's also court ordered, so.
That too.
There we go. Let's do that.
Okay, just want to make sure that that is live. I think we are. Something is up with this. Okay, well, we are going to get started. It's not showing that it is live, but oh, it is. We are. So you've been watching me just kind of fiddle around here for a little bit. All right. Well, thank you so much for everyone being here. My name is Laura Miller. I'm the volunteer and community engagement manager for Just Dine, which was formerly known as Madison Area Urban Ministry until this past summer, when we changed our name. So our mission is to help transform individual lives and social systems to create a just and equitable community. We're delighted to welcome you to the third session of our 2021 Just Conversation series. We envision the series to engage our neighbors in discussion around important timely issues that are affecting our community. And our hope was to keep this in more of a conversational format and focused on creating solutions as opposed to stating the problems. Just some logistical items. We are streaming this live on our Facebook page. Welcome to those joining us on Facebook. Please feel free to drop some questions in the comments and I will be getting those to the moderator throughout the the event. And if you're right here with us on Zoom, welcome, very welcome, and feel free to drop your questions in the chat and I'll be doing the same. We're hoping to use about the last 25 minutes or so for questions from the audience. So anything that hasn't been addressed yet. So we are so happy to have candidates for Madison Common Council with us tonight to discuss their vision for a just Madison. Thank you to Benji, Charlie, Juliana, Naomi, Nikki, Jeanette, Tessa, Brandy, JL, Matt, and Aisha for their commitment to civic engagement and for joining us tonight. I will now throw it to our moderator for tonight's event, one of Justine's dedicated board members, Phil Haslinger.
Hi, and again, welcome to you all. Thanks, Laura, for getting this set up. Thank you to everyone who's here. I've been on the Justine Board for, I don't know, three to four years. I've been doing things with Justine over many years back when it was Madison Area Urban Ministry and really appreciate the way it has tried to engage in that sort of transformation to create a community where everyone has a chance to succeed. A lot of our focus is on working with people returning to the community after incarceration. We have a place called Just Bakery that does job training and produces really good bread and cookies and things, which are for sale. And another big program is Healing House, which provides a place for people who are currently homeless to go after hospitalization, often after giving birth. It's a place where the family can be. For a long time, when you were discharged from the hospital, you could go back to your car and that didn't work so well. So it's been really great to have Healing House up and running. We also have a number of other programs that over time have worked with kids, have helped groups around citizens who are returning to the community and also play a role in advocacy around issues of housing, poverty, justice, those kinds of things. So that's who we are. I'm really honored to be part of that group. I think it's been just a really cool group to be part of. Tonight, we're gonna, there are three questions we're essentially posing to the candidates who are here, and these are broader questions and not the kind of things that would normally come up in aldermanic forums or debate. And the first one is what's Madison already doing right to create a just and equitable community for all? Then we're gonna ask folks to give a shout out to an organization or a person that's doing this work, just a really quick sort of popcorn thing, and we'll end with what isn't being done that needs to be done to create a just and equitable community for all. So I'm gonna ask candidates to keep the first answer to about four minutes. Laura will hold up warning signs at one minute and 30 seconds, and I will try and reel you in at the end if you want to keep going. So that's, that's kind of the plan. And as Laura said, if you have questions from the audience, please pop them in the chat or on Facebook, put them in the comment section. Laura will be gathering those and we will get to those toward the end. For the first round, I'm gonna take the candidates just in the order of districts, or if there are two from the same district, then alphabetically. We'll mix it up a little more as we go along, but that means Benji from District Two, you are up first. So what's Madison already doing right to create a just and equitable community for all?
This is two minutes, right?
Four minutes.
Four minutes, okay.
Yeah. If you're watching on Zoom, you might want to go to speaker view so you can see who's speaking.
Yeah, so my name is Benji Ramirez Gomez. I'm a lifelong Madisonian running for District Two. And what is Madison already doing to create a more just society? We've got a lot. As the receptionist at the YWCA Madison, I'm pretty connected to a lot of different or starting to become more connected with different housing programs and opportunities for people currently experiencing homelessness. And even in the past almost year that I've been there now, I've, I've learned how both powerful and limited the resources here in Madison are. I mean, the YWCA does amazing work. Salvation Army does a lot of work housing people in emergency situations, but they aren't quite working together. Coordinated entry has been described as a disservice to the people that we serve. And so there's people who are, for the first time, becoming very aware of how dynamic and vital housing is to the security of our residents here in Madison. And so we see groups like UW BiPOC starting to come out and, and offer a lot of mutual aid. We see, we saw over the summer groups like Link, who were empowering folks and raising money to put people in hotels, hotel rooms, so they didn't so they could at least have a break from the trauma of being homeless. And there's so many other groups that are, that are building and crafting their own Midwestern identity. Because frankly, there's, living here in a place like the Midwest, which has a very predominantly white population, it's very hard to start to understand your own cultural identity, and you never see it represented anywhere. So there's a lot of groups that are stepping into the fold to really craft beautiful spaces for BiPOC here in Madison. I know that Seminarian is one of them, and I know that's the second question to shout out people, but there's, there's quite a, quite a lot of brilliant people doing really good work. And I feel weird being the first one to go because I, I see the, the other candidates who are here, and they're also doing incredible work. They're, they're organizing in their own communities and really rising to the challenge of well, the hardships of the pandemic, the hardships of the economic fallout, the hardships of not being able to be in community because it's dangerous and unsafe for all of us. And so really, the question now is how, again, how do we start to work together? How do we start to coalesce our efforts so that we're not being redundant, so that we're not repeating mistakes, and that we can actually empower the work that everyone else is doing? With that, I think I'll yield my last 10, 15 seconds.
Great. Benji, thanks so much for starting this off. So Charlie, what is, Charlie's in District Three on the far west side. What's Madison already doing right to create a just and equitable community? And you are muted.
Oh, and I, and you faded out. Is this coming to me, I'm assuming?
Yes, Charlie.
Okay.
Sorry.
I am so used to my awkward entrances, even on Zoom. Thank you. There is so much that is going right in Madison right now, as far as the way that we are responding to these calls for social justice. I see two different Madisons. It's, it's a theme that I keep talking about. There's two different Madisons, and we know that one is served, if we're going to use the word just right now as referring to justice, one has served a different brand of justice than the other, and there are inequities here that is clear. But when I was young and growing up in the schools here, I told a story recently about how I was taught the dreams of Martin Luther King Jr. from abundant life school to Senate to the fall. It was something that Madison had kind of taken up as a whole, like we are going to be a welcoming city that has this progressive movement towards being just and treating everybody like they belong and giving them a piece of the vision. And I grew up in that Madison. I had incredible experiences in that Madison that I got to sit next to Maya Angelou and have her sign a poem for me. I got to sing and dance and be taken out to dinner by the Reverend Jesse Jackson. These were things that formed me. Benji referred to how do people come about their identities in the city that they live in? And I think with the events over this past year, coming to a national and city turning point, we're really wondering like, how do we let everybody in their own skin, in their own flesh, in their own worldview, in their own politics feel like they are heard, feel like they are valued, like they are being protected if they are also one who is seeking the common good? And I think we're doing a lot of things right here in Madison. We have countless organizations that would love to sit down with our municipal government and our mayor and say, we're here on the ground helping. Let us work with you. We have so many people that were answering the call, putting refrigerators on the roads and blankets out. And they are the ones that, when the, when men in homeless shelters are most vulnerable, they're the ones responding. And they're the ones making sure that they know that they're valued. So there's a lot that's going wrong. We've seen it. It's affected all of our lives. But I think there's a lot that's right, and I'm really excited about what a new common council is gonna do for our city. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Charlie. So moving on to District Eight, we have two candidates for District Eight here tonight. We'll start with Juliana Bennett. So what's Madison already doing right to create a just and equitable community?
Okay, well, one, Charlie, I need to talk to you and I need to see Maya Angelou's autograph. That is my queen. So I need to see it. Um, hi. I'm Juliana. If y'all don't know me, I use she/her pronouns. I'm a university student. One of the co-founders of the UW Madison BiPOC Coalition and running for District Eight Alder for Madison City Council. And, okay, in answering this question, like, what is Madison already doing right? I just, I kind of think of it like a metaphor. I used to, I swam all of my life since I was five. And I kind of think about it like, you know, swimming, you start off and you start off on the starting blocks. That's where Madison is right now, I think. We kind of like are right on the edge, like we're right getting ready to go and move forward in terms of like real I mean, real racial justice and equity and inclusion. And we kind of have that start where my, I'm running on the platforms of affordable housing, we imagine public safety, sustainability. We're kind of like, we've seen how in the pandemic, people have been able to come together and provide homes for people experiencing homelessness, resources that haven't, that weren't there previously. We've seen with the Black Lives Matter movement, how we've been able to create the crisis response team based off of the cahoots model. And additionally, with sustainability, we have a goal to reach net zero emissions by 2030. These are all great motions on the starting block. And I think what we, what's what I expect from this progressive council coming forward is to continue jump off that block and move forward and some, and continue these actions and get off to a straight and strong and fast start. I like had the privilege of being in District Eight, which I perceive as like one of probably the most socially radical districts on council. We've seen how like Max Prestigiacomo has been able to speak up and speak with conviction and freely, and I'm thankful to have his support and to continue moving forward in his footsteps with these efforts. We've seen how the community has come together, and like Benji mentioned with the UW Madison BiPOC Coalition, we've been able to create a coalition of 50-plus multicultural student organizations that are reshaping what Madison even looks like, and that's not to mention to reshaping Madison together, which our Benji Ramirez has started up. But I think that with this council moving forward, we've been able to pave the way for such a diverse cohort of new members to be on common council. And I expect us to move forward with the efforts that we've already seen to really push for a truly diverse and equitable Madison.
Great. Thanks so much. People are really being great about time and being concise. Thank you for doing that. Another candidate from District Eight downtown is Naomi. Naomi, can you tell us, introduce yourself and then tell us what you think is going right in Madison to create a more just community?
Yeah, hi, everyone. My name is Naomi Albusay, current UW student, longtime Madison resident, and I'm running for District Eight Alder. I love this question because, you know, we're often talking about so many things that we need changed and fixed here in Madison, but to highlight some of the amazing work, I will speak from my own experience. So specifically as one of the youngest candidates running, I've seen so much that the community has done to empower youth. And I think that, you know, we're seeing so many organizations come about that have a vision for Madison, you know, that progressive Madison that was sold to everyone. The organizations such as Rooted, who have urban gardens and teaching kids about ways in which they can use the land as a resource and empower them to be more economically independent by, you know, cultivating their own fruits and vegetables and being able to make a profit out of that, as well as UW Extension and all the amazing programs in which they empower you to learn more about their government. And how they can get involved and start working with different committees at a young age. Porchlight, who I had the opportunity to build some tiny homes with, the creation of the civilian oversight board especially, because that was something we fought for every single day this summer with Impact Demand, saying we need more community control. And then, you know, here is a body created that is community control, and slowly we're seeing that happen in, in different spaces as well. So there's so much, I could go on for days about what Madison is doing right. But I think that the reason we're still, you know, fighting for justice and to create a just Madison is because there, you know, white supremacy is still there, and people aren't working together in a way that is productive for everyone, especially the most vulnerable. And I think that's why we're seeing so many people now running for office. And we're seeing groups like Freedom Inc. continuing to empower those to continue to run for office and do more in their community. Because, you know, there's, there's definitely a disconnect, as mentioned before. But I think that with this cohort, we're seeing a lot of change. We're seeing legislation being up to amplify the community's voice. And so, you know, if I were to shout out a couple, Freedom Inc., Urban Triage, Impact Demand, so many student organizations on campus because they all see the vision for Madison and are willing to do the work to create that bridge, to create this just and equitable and a place that we can all call home. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. So moving to the far west side, Nikki, can you tell us what's Madison doing right to create a just and equitable community for all?
Hello, everybody. My name is Nikki Conklin, and I'm running for Alder of District Nine. You know, I'm, I'm running because District Nine needs a new, young voice to really represent the community and bring power to all the folks. As a community activist, mother, first generation college graduate, and deeply rooted neighborhood leader, I have experienced firsthand the issues that need tackling in this district. As a black mother with a degree in human services, living, working, and raising her children in one of the most segregated districts in the most segregated state, I have lived experiences that nobody else has, and I have the skills needed to bring these changes. You know, my top priorities are quality, affordable housing, equity and justice, and safety for all. So when we're talking about what Madison is doing right, you know, like everyone has kind of pointed out already, there is things that Madison is doing right. And one of those, I think, is definitely with the housing, as far as trying to help people experiencing homelessness. They have great programs for the Housing First Project. I truly believe in that, you know, making sure that our basic needs are met. When people have a house and a roof over their head, that's one less thing that they need to worry about. And it also gives them more freedom to really focus on the other issues that may be going on in their life. I think, you know, really getting these shelters up and running and, and being able to provide for the amount of folks experiencing homelessness, where I think we all know that the numbers have doubled and tripled through this last year through the pandemic, but they've always been high numbers. And I think it's important that we get folks and children especially into homes so they can start their lives, you know, getting that barrier off of their back of not knowing where they're gonna lay their head down at night. Like I said before, too, also, I'm a mother, so I know Madison does do a lot of just for children. Maybe not as much as for black children, but there is many, many programs that, you know, MSCR and the Luscher Center and you know, a lot of different programs that my children were involved in when they were younger, I always made sure that they were involved in sports or music and, you know, I'm thankful that Madison had those opportunities for my children. And then another thing that Madison is doing right, and I think they're on the right track, is really introducing the CAHoots program here. We know it's been so successful in Eugene, Oregon, saving public safety, you know, $8 million a year. You know, making sure that we're sending the right professionals to the right job is so important. And so I'm excited to see the results that are going to be coming from within this program that here, starting in Dane County. So I'm glad that the council was able to see how important this was, and it was able to pass this and get this moving and, and in action, because the sooner we get this going, the sooner we're gonna see a more just Madison. So thank you guys for your time and thank you for having me.
Great. Thank you. And so moving a little closer in on the west side, Jeanette. What's Madison already doing right to create a just and equitable community?
Hi, thank you for having us and thank you for every, every single one in this panel. Again, getting, getting to know each, each other so well the last few weeks and months. It has been great. And thank you for the public to participate. I, again, my name is Jennifer O'Callaghan, running for District Ten of the west side of Madison. It, the District Ten is a, is a pretty large area which, with, which has a very diverse, diverse ethnic, ethnic and multicultural group of people here. And, and we have been hardly impacted by the pandemic. There's a lot of housing insecurities happening in the city, on the district right now. So those are issues that we need, really need to tackle, and that's one of the main reasons I'm running. I wanna, I, I I'm determined to run on the, on the facts that having basic needs, having, giving people basic, their basic needs, it makes us all safer. So a healthy community is a safe community, and I think that is a message that we keep on hearing all over the district, the city, the state, and even all the way down from, from Washington and the, and the Health Department. So to me, that's, that's kind of my primary focus, the health of our people. So when it comes to the things that Madison is doing good, I mean, I echo everything that has been said already, the CAHoots project, the nonprofit organizations, being an advocate for people experiencing homelessness for so many years, there's a lot of organizations out, out in the field doing the work. But when it comes down to the city council themselves, I mean, there's, there's a couple of things that, that come to mind. For sure, the police oversight war. I mean, that is, that is something that we have been fighting for, for years and years and years. So to finally see it, see it here is, is just a, it, it just gives me a lot of hope that we are being finally heard and that, that we are moving in the right direction there. They was, they put together the Small Business Equity and Recovery Program Grants. Again, maybe some, some, nothing perfect, but it's a step in the right direction to make sure that businesses of color can actually apply for grants and get some, some money reserved for them from, that is coming down from the federal government. And the Madison Dane County Violence Prevention Plan, something that it is a, a they have been working on this for, for a while, and the pandemic put a, put a delay on it. So I am super excited to be, to partner with, with the people working on this program, which I, I think you guys, Just Dine has some people already participated on it and have provided input. So I am looking forward to, to continue to, to get that implemented, to just get it running. Like Juliana was saying earlier, let's just get our feet, our, our feet wet. Let's just jump in and pivot as we need to pivot and change and update, whatever we need to update to make it strong and to make it good for our community. So of all the, the good things that we are doing, because I, I mean, again, there's a lot of people doing good things out there. The, the one that I'm most excited about is the, is the the Violence Prevention Plan that is about to be rolled out. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so very much. So we're gonna just move all the way across the city to the north side, District 12. Tessa, can you tell us what's Madison already doing right to create a just and equitable community? And tell us just a short bit about yourself as well.
Yes, yeah. So my name is Tessa Chavaria, and like was said, District 12, which is from the Yahar River down east Wash till you get to M A T C. We have the airport in this district. And then it butts up against the end. So the old Oscar Meyer site, East High, the temporary men's homeless shelter, which was just on the news, so everyone probably knows where that is. And about myself, I always find it, as a community organizer, I think, we spend so much time looking at like how we fit the needs of the community, and it's not about us. And then the minute you turn to electoral politics, everyone's like, tell me about you. And I'm like, but it's about the issues. And so I guess I moved to Madison 10 years ago, and if I'm gonna talk about what Madison's doing right, the things that drew me to this city were the, the bike path, like the bike network, right? When I first moved here, my only transportation was the bicycle. And that's how I got all around this city, and I think that it's great. I think there are many things that are wonderful about the city of Madison. But I think that we have to look at that as not the, the solution, right? Everyone has talked about this so far. We need to be looking at, at racial justice, and we need to be looking at climate change, and we need to be looking forward. And we shouldn't take those as personal attacks as Madison is bad. What we should look to is, okay, there's this framework. There are these things that we have. How do we build? How do we make this place better for everyone? How do we make it a just Madison for every resident that lives here? And so for me, things that are going well, cops out of schools. Love it. Love to see that continue. I know it happened recently, but that was a long time in the making, and it was so exciting and inspiring to see the Freedom Make Use Squad accomplish that this last year because the community came together and backed them. And, and came out in the streets and, and really showed up to say And, and came out in the streets and, and really showed up to say, this is what a just Madison looks like. It looks like not arresting our youth. It looks like ending the prison to pipeline, the school to pipeline. Oh, I'm saying this all wrong, the school to prison pipeline, there we go. Just Bakery, I used to work at a bakery co-op on Willie Street, and we knew about Just Bakery way back when it started. And it was such an exciting program, right? To take people after they've been incarcerated and to introduce skills and back into the jobs. Like those are the types of programs we need to have. Those are the transformative programs that heal our community. On top of that, neighborhood farmers markets really help bring healthy, affordable foods into communities that maybe don't have that access in those grocery stores. I know I participated when I worked at a co-op bakery in helping with a farmer's market at Century Espanol on the south side, right? Which is the areas considered a food desert, and people intentionally went down and helped set up the farmer's market and created that space so that we can right some of those wrongs. Now, we should be thinking about on the city council level, more institutional ways to solve those problems in the long term. But in the meantime, people in Madison come together when they see a problem and work to start creating solutions. And that's really expiring, and we see that with Black Umbrella, with Urban Triage, with Freedom Inc., with UW-BYB, with all of these organizations, whether they've been here for 10 years or 10 months. The people of Madison want the city to be, will actively, want the city to be better and are working towards it. So it's time for institutions to catch up with what our city should be doing for its populations. And I'll pass with that. Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. So we'll move to the south side with Brandy. I feel sorry for the folks at the, sort of in the second half of this list, because a lot of people have already said things that you might want to say, but that's okay, you can repeat them. So Brandy, what's, what's Madison doing right to create a just and equitable community for all?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. I think we're doing a lot of things right in terms of the folks who are being bold, stepping out front and really, you know, causing us to evaluate how we define justice, how we define equity, and how we live up to or move in the direction of living up to our city's mission statement. So I will say that our co-conspirators, white folks are getting bolder. They're taking a deeper dive. I find out a lot of conversations that are uncomfortable, that people are putting themselves in. And they're seeking out those conversations, making the ask, what can I do to support the frontline? And they're showing up, right? The work of Urban Triage would not be possible without our co-conspirators or our folks in the field that show up every day volunteering their time and volunteering their efforts in doing the work that you can't see, but it's necessary to keep the organization moving and pushing. So I'll say that, and I also will say that we're very good at articulating the needs and the problems, right? Boy, we can, we quantify it. We've done enough data collection to show and to support the statements as it relates to the need for first responders and more after-school and alternative programming for our youth. And how we, we need, you know, more violence prevention versus intervention programmings. We've quantified what it will take to have a healthy community. Now, the question is, will we invest in it? Now, that's a whole nother question, right? So we roll out great resolutions, we do the footwork for task force, right? The recommendations that came out of the hard work of many who carried the work of Young Gifted and Black on for years to come, including the Community Oversight Committee that was, you know, kind of rooted from the Community Control Over Police Campaign that launched a few years ago. But folks who are willing to push the envelope, give within side system and say, hey, we need to do something different, and then cultivate and create what that thing could look like, right? For a paradigm shift and to really represent equity. Now, as a city, are we quite there yet to make the investment? I will say not. That's why it's time for us to, you know, bring in a new year with a new team of folks who are willing to do the hard work and make the hard decisions as it relates to budget items and investing in people, investing in healthy communities and moving around, moving away from this status quo of investing in money and profit, right? So I say that we know how to articulate the issue, we've, we've, we've done the research and we've done it really well. So big ups to Madison for that. And we've attempted to deal with our homeless population, population and our housing crisis. But we forgot to look at how to execute and implement. So then there's been a lot of blowback. And the people that can be most helpful to figure those things out are the people that we serve, right? And specifically within our homeless consortium, which I'm now a part of, our organization is. And there's just a lot of work we have to do to bring those to the table that are most impacted by our decisions, how we're moving, how we're rolling, and the people that we send out to do the outreach and execute the advocacy. So I will say, you know, someone said bike paths, we're great at bike paths. We're great at making Madison comfortable for all of our white folks, cause God know bike paths are important. But we have a hard time investing in the things that really will increase safety and equity for all. So thank you again for the question.
Great, thanks, Brandy.
You're welcome.
So we're gonna, we're gonna just head on down the Belt Line to District Sixteen, which is also on the far east side, but the southern part of the east side. We've got two candidates from District Sixteen, so we'll start with JL. If you can introduce yourself and tell us, what do you think Madison is doing right to create a just and equitable community for all?
Sure, thank you for the question. Thank you for having us here and for Jess, Jess Dane for moderating and hosting. So I am JL Curry. I am a lifelong Madisonian as well as a lifelong East Sider. I am in my thirties and am now raising children in a community that once invested in me. And so it's a very humbling experience to be running a campaign right now for a local election as important and historic as the one that we find ourselves in today. And so no pressure going after the amazingness Brandy Grayson, but to echo a lot of what's already been said and also being used to kind of the chronological order of going later in the form agenda has caused me to have to revise some of my answers sometimes, to not necessarily duplicate what others are saying. But I want to echo what everyone has said so far and kind of really dive into the point of we're such an educated, intellectual community. And I think with some of that analysis that Brandy was talking about, there's really been some stepping outside of the norm leadership that has erected. So we have seen some white-led coalitions like Groundwork, folks really doing the deep dive and educational work to be self-aware. So when you are being part of environments where you haven't been before or you're dominant, you've been dominant and before, humbling yourself and understanding power and its influences. And so we do really good about talking about issues. Diversity, Equity and Inclusion has been a sector of work that has been very implemented a lot in our community and nationwide over the last couple of years. And so we're doing right in getting closer to getting, gaining the perspectives that matter most about issues that impact the most marginalized. And so one quote that I haven't been able to use a lot during the campaign that I love is from Ayanna Pressley, Representative from Massachusetts. And her assertion is that the people closest to the pain should be closest to the power. And so I think in leveraging, leveraging power and privilege, we see what's represented here today, a historic amount of BIPOC candidates. And so we do have an opportune time or opportune, an opportunity ahead of us to elect folks who are closest to that pain, can bring those perspectives and communities with them as we rise together to make a just and equitable day.
Great, thanks so much. And so Matt, also District Sixteen, tell us about you and what you see as helping us make a more, a better, more just community right now.
Well, thanks, Phil. And I want to especially thank Just Dane for welcoming all of us to this important discussion. We have some big challenges that we're facing together as a community. There are huge opportunities too. I want to thank Brandy for calling me a co-conspirator. I think that's one of the nicer things that anybody has said to me in a while. I definitely will be a co-conspirator with you, win or lose. So I appreciate that sentiment. But look, we all need safe communities, and at the same time, we need to move forward on police reforms that protect the lives and dignity of, of every citizen. We know also that an effective and equitable COVID, COVID vaccine rollout is the key to returning to, to normalcy now by getting our teachers and kids safely back into schools and fully reopening businesses in the weeks and months ahead. And I know we can do that together. And we understand that pro-growth and pro-people economic development is critical to all of our futures. Madison absolutely can become a national success story for a modern, just, inclusive city that comes together to strengthen economic opportunities for all of us. So I'm running for alder because I envision a better District Sixteen and a better east side. One that's a more vibrant place to live, work and play for every single member of our community. And, and I do have to say, just like everybody else, you know, that I really appreciate the effort to talk about what Madison is, is doing right to create a just and equitable community for all. Because I think sometimes, especially over the past year, there's been so much negativity and despair. But I do want to focus on, on something, you know, incredibly positive to me that, that I've observed over the course of this campaign, and, and that is that Madison is full of amazing nonprofit organizations, education institutions, activists and neighbors, including everybody on this call, who are working hard to create long-term positive changes for all citizens. I mean, that type of organizing is moving us forward in a positive direction, even though I think sometimes it feels like, you know, we're going sideways. And I want to specifically mention the organizations that have worked with all of us candidates to help share our policy ideas, because I, I think it's an impressive list. Just Madison, or I'm sorry, Just Dane, Madison Bikes, 350 Madison, the Affordable Housing Action Alliance, the East Side Progressives, WRT, the LVM Neighborhood Association, Edelante, Freedom Inc., Downtown Madison Inc., the League of Women Voters for Dane County, and the Madison Chamber of Commerce, the Building Trades, AFSCME. And I know I'm leaving many more out. But these organizations, which all have different missions and interests, fundamentally are pushing for a more just and equitable community for all of us. And I think that it's, that's an incredibly unique dynamic in Madison, and I think it'll continue to serve as a driving force for positive change.
Great, thank you. So back over to the kind of middle west side. Aisha, can you tell us about you and what do you think we're doing right to make a more just and equitable Madison for all?
Oh, thank you so much. Again, my name is Aisha Mo. I'm running in District Nineteen, which is over on the west side of Madison. I also want to thank Just Dane for hosting this conversation with all of the candidates. And I think that's really where I want to start with, what is Madison doing right to create a just and equitable community? And it's doing the work to have tough conversations. It's about getting uncomfortable and having conversations, especially when you're an ally or you aren't educated on the issues, to get educated and to get into those conversations and to truly be an active listener and take your cues from the groups and the communities that all, that you're wanting to help. And I think that is one of the things that in the culture of Madison is the most exciting aspect towards creating a just and equitable Madison. I also want to echo some of the things that have already been said today, but I think it's worth repeating about what Madison's been doing that's been going well. I think first, the Housing First Projects that have been implemented, I think we need to make sure that we're moving towards a Madison that houses everyone, and our housing is a guarantee. And homelessness isn't something that exists in our city. And continuing to support projects like that is how we get there. Secondly, the Small Business Equity and Recovery Grant, which specifically wanted to support businesses, local businesses that were struggling due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And they chose to make sure that that money went to minority-owned, minority-owned and operated businesses first as a recovery for, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Secondly, or thirdly, all of the grassroots organizing that goes into creating the, the big motions to get the police out of schools and to get a civilian oversight board. It took communities years of organizing to get those implemented, and now we need to just keep pushing that momentum forward. And lastly, I, this is something that an organization I work with, our Wisconsin Revolution, our Wisconsin Revolution was able to implement and organize around, was getting a resolution passed in the Dane, at the Dane County Board of Supervisors that supported a single payer healthcare system. It was a resolution that passed through the County Board Supervisors to support as a county, single payer healthcare system, which is again, another way that we're able to show support for everyone in our community. So with that, I just want to say thank you again. So yeah, just thank you.
Great, thanks. So I had said to some of you who ran early that I was gonna do the same order for the second question, but actually I think what I'd like to do is reverse the order so that the people who were at the end this time don't have to be at the end next time. So Aisha, get ready, you'll be right back. So thanks to all of you for really thoughtful answers. This is an incredible group of people that are running for Madison's Comic Council. It's great to have you with us. If you are listening in on this and you have questions, please either put them in the chat or in, on Facebook, put them in the comment section. Laura will be watching to gather them up. Questions should be things that are broad to all the candidates as opposed to a specific issue in a particular district or particular candidate. We'll try and manage that free for all when we get to the question and answer part. But for now, some of you have already done this, but there, there may be even more than one you're thinking of. Can you give a shout out to an organization that's doing this work of creating a just and equitable Madison in the community? It's just about a minute apiece would be great. Laura can put up the 30-second sign as kind of an early warning. So Aisha.
Thank you, Phil. While there are a lot of organizations, and I hope that everyone is able to bring up a lot of organizations that have done a lot of the work to organize our community, to create a just community. I just wanted to actually take a minute to give a shout out to my mom, who is a immigrant from Pakistan and a business owner in Madison. She's a psychiatrist and she owns her own clinic, and it's all women-run. And as a psychiatrist, I don't know if you guys know anything about the healthcare system, but it is not great. And there is profit in not supporting the most marginalized members of our community. So people who are on just Medicaid end up not paying the best to seek mental health care. And my mom made sure that that was not a consideration, and she really made sure to see patients who are on straight Medicaid or Medicare and Medicaid. So she's seeing foster children and the elderly and prioritizing their mental health here in District Nineteen in Madison. And I'm just beyond proud of her. So thank you.
I love your shout out to your mom, and I bet she does too. So Matt, a shout out to an organization, a person who's doing the work to make Madison a more just and equitable place.
Yeah, I want to give a shout out to Moving Out. For, for anyone who's not familiar, this is an organization dedicated to providing a range of safe, affordable, community, community-integrated housing solutions to adults with disabilities and to families that include children with disabilities. And importantly, they're creating housing opportunities that are embedded within the neighborhoods to make sure that residents are fully part of the community. Here in District Sixteen, they've partnered with the community and private developers to create affordable and supportive housing. The ACE Apartments Project on Cottage Grove Road was recently awarded a crucial federal tax credit. So Moving Out could provide 70 units of housing, 59 of which will be affordable. And that partnership is, is really reflective of the Royster Commons Moving Out Project further west on Cottage Grove near the Penny Library. So these are innovative partnerships. They're a terrific example of what's achievable that we can continue to work toward to, to create a more equitable community.
Great, thanks, Matt. JL, who would you give a shout out to?
So in the spirit of tonight's conversation and kind of leaning on what I said in my intro, I think it's been amazing how much attention has been poured into this election, how many folks are running and not just within the council, but within the county of Dane. And so I want to give a shout out to Shawn Matson. He is an MSD teacher, and so that in itself, right now, is shout out to the public teachers, teachers everywhere, whether you're teaching young children up to high schoolers. But he's also an anti-racist activist, and I want to applaud his efforts. When he found out that Brian Benford was running against him or would be his opponent, he decided to step back and leverage his power so that District Six would elect their first black alder ever. black alder ever in history. And so that in itself is a plain and powerful example of co-conspiracy in action.
Great. Brandy, how about you? Who would you give a shout out to?
Oh, well, that was just so powerful, JL, because that is what anti-racist work looks like. It looks like white people giving up their privilege and power, and white men and men, and all the folks who are on top of that hierarchy moving out the way. So kudos, that was a great shout out. I want to give a shout out to my co-conspirators with CRP, Community Response Team. They're like in the front lines. They do a lot of research and policy analysis. They're the folks that pushed the envelope for our recommendations that came down, the task force, the police task force, the overseeing the community oversight committee, and the auditor. And they really worked hard to keep that resolution and that policy strong. And they did not give up. And I'm telling y'all, we've been fighting that fight for years. So I just want to big ups to them, big ups to Freedom, Inc., that consistently stay on the frontline. I want to give big ups to my girl Karen Pfeiffer over at Neo Maya, who works side by side with me through the Dane County Collaboration of Black Service Providers, which include Foster and Jackie Hunt, that's consistently out here on the frontline, serving our people with little funding and little support. And all of our people, and our neighborhood moms and our neighborhood leaders and coordinators that coordinate homeless meals, we have a few people that do their thing without resources, without funding, and without recognition. So I just want to give a big ups to all of those folks that consistently show up. And the folks who approach conversations when they don't like ask questions versus assuming, but really getting to discovery and building analysis of how racism shows up, what white supremacy is, how we all embody it, and recognizing and being accountable for when it does show up, show up versus being, I'm not racist, I don't do that, those things, I have black friends, you're right, because we all carry those attributes. So I just want to give a shout out to all of us doing the work in the transformational education and the transformational justice that's taking place in our city because it's happening. And if you're not noticing it, you're sleeping. So all the folks doing the work, sorry about that, Phil.
Isn't it great?
I got excited, I got excited, okay.
Not just traditional organizations, but some really innovative things that are going on. Tessa, how about you? Who would you give a shout out to?
Yes, yeah, I mean, I think so many organizations listen, it's so hard to pick one. I would continue my shout out to Freedom, Inc., Youth Squad. I think when the youth, when the high schoolers come together and push radical change, it's time for the adults to really listen, right? And the high schoolers have been organizing in Madison a lot over the last few years for climate change, for racial justice. And I think it's time for adults to listen to what the youth are saying in these issues. And so huge shout out to them. And also, I'm just going to give a shout out to WRT. I think that having independent, community-controlled media helps bring these stories of all these organizations, all these activists, out to the general public and let them know what's happening. I heard someone say that you can tell when a place has independent media because the population is more informed about what's actually happening in its city. So I think that's a crucial thing in Madison and really happy it's still around. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Jeanette, who would you give a shout out to, organization or person?
Yes, I am, in an effort not to be biased, I'm just going to give a shout out to collaboration. I think we seen, we saw some, we have continued to see so much collaboration between so many organizations in this city that are doing the great work to deal with it, to help people that are experiencing homelessness. And as being part of the Friends of State Street family, I am constantly seeing that happening. I see how Catalyst for Change has just grown from these two people that I absolutely adore, that have the biggest hearts, that I am so privileged to call friends and see them growing and see them working on the encampments that we had this summer, taking care of the people living in the parks. But that, their work, as impactful as it has been, it could never, it could have never been enough without the help of so many other organizations that pulled together to serve this community. And the people, the people in this city, when there's a need, we do come together. We see donations flying through like crazy to help people that were in the parks. We seen how, we had a mobility campaign the other day, and people just send, you know, send us money just to buy bus pass tickets for, to help our friends that are in need. So instead of just picking one simple organization, definitely collaboration. And it's just a key for everything on this city, and we need more of that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, with so many groups and organizations trying to make a difference, that notion of finding ways to collaborate is so critical. So thanks for highlighting that. Nikki?
Thank you. Anyone who knows me probably already knows what I'm going to say, but I'm definitely shouting out the Lucia Community Education Center. LCEC is the heart of my community, and it's the heart of me. Honestly, it's given me so many opportunities. But one of the opportunities that I received from the Lucia Center would be the Neighborhood Organizing Institute. Big shout out to NOI, as we call it. If it wasn't for NOI, I wouldn't be here today, running for alder. So I'm so thankful for that Leadership Development Program, Alex Shabazz, Nikki Cooper, two amazing women that have definitely been doing the work, leading in our communities, and without much recognition. So I definitely want to recognize those two wonderful ladies and Lucia Center NOI. Thank you.
Yeah, Nikki, I think if you hadn't said Lucia, everybody would have.
Exactly, they know, they already know where I stand at.
How about you? Who would you give a shout out to?
Yeah, that's a really hard question. I kind of did in my earlier response, you shout out to a lot of different groups. But I think, you know, I specifically, I'm going to shout out all the youth-led organizations, specifically because I've been organizing since I was in high school. So just down the street at Madison West. And I've met so many different people, have so many different mentors, the Robinson family, State Senator Latonya Johnson, Max Prestigiacomo. There's so many different people that have supported me in so many different ways. So I thank them all the time because I recognize how much work they're doing. But people who I don't often get a chance to thank because they're just doing stuff so much, my parents. And so they own a business on the east side of Madison, Full Spectrum, which does home health care. And I've seen so much as a military family, and I want to shout out them. I know they're watching tonight, so thank you so much for your love and support. Thanks.
We've got more happy parents now, this is great. Juliana?
All right, well, I guess I have to shout out my dad, but I love you, Dad. He already knows, I gotta give him a call back. But, okay, I think it's well within my realms to shout out the UW Madison BIPOC Coalition. I know, yes, I'm a co-founder, but I'm gonna go ahead and shout them out and shout out like specifically my co-conspirators and those that have like co-founded the organization with us. And I know, Benji, you've worked directly with them, people like Tara and Megan, who put their bodies out on the line every single day to organize the March for Asian Lives, literally in one day, who are out on the streets helping out a person experiencing homelessness that was like shot and like wasn't receiving, wasn't receiving medical attention because the police were refusing them medical attention. I know that with this coalition, we've literally been able to make changes on this campus. We've literally been able to make changes to policing, make changes, and push the university to push out COVID, the COVID-19 student relief, which is necessary. And I know that, like, it's really cool and happy to shout out this coalition because it's not just me, it's all of us pushing for us together. And I think that's what's really powerful and what we need more.
Great, thank you. So Charlie, who would you shout out to?
I am going to do, I am so loving everybody's answers. And I just want to throw back to what JL said. I, um, I think that when people like actually, you know, live up to everything that they're telling a community, it is, like Brandy said, extremely powerful. And I'm sure that many of us running against such other candidates would wish that they would step down, you know, and let us serve our community. But it's something we have to fight for too, you know. And I, my shout out is to Steve Starkey and Wilma Flintstone of Madison's Outreach and Wilma's Fund. They have been fighting for the LGBTQ community on the street level where very often, people don't want to look and see what's really happening. And I was introduced to Wilma through another beautiful, wonderful community. I'm always shouting out to the tip-top open mic because it's a beautiful, inclusive, loving community. And Wilma's Fund is just doing this beautiful work that is impacting lives. And I have a coworker who arrived in Madison, was living a very violent and tumultuous home situation because of how they began to identify themselves to the world. And a friend of them said, well, there's a parade downtown and you just need to be there. And there's a community in Madison. And this person was telling me this story, and he said, and all of a sudden, this person pointed at me and said, can I give you a hug and welcome you to this parade? And he told me it was this person, Wilma, and I was like, I know Wilma, and Wilma does really love you. And so I just, Steve Starkey and Wilma, thank you, Outreach, thank you. Look out, they're having their 10-year anniversary party, so that's going to be out there soon. So support them if you can, thank you.
And I love the way you also brought some of the cultural things in that we can shout out to in this community as well. That's really good. So Benji, you're going to run out of hearts pretty soon to put up on the screen. You're just having a great time there. Who would you give a shout out to? You did, you did something at the beginning, but who else would you shout out to?
Well, Phil, I got a lot of love. After hearing JL speak tonight, I first want to shout her out. I'm very indecisive, I will say. I just donated $100 to JL's campaign because I'm inspired, I am in awe. And so I just wanted to put that out there. Already off the bat, I said I'm indecisive. I've got to, my high school social worker, Christina Shupman, who literally always believed in me, literally always told me that I was capable of achieving very great things despite the world telling me that I wasn't. And my good friend and mentor, Marisela Comas, who I met through Regeneracion, out of San Luis Pino. I owe everything that I am to Regeneracion because without that space to really craft an authentic Latina identity for myself, I wouldn't have been able to explore my gender. I wouldn't have been able to explore what it meant to be Latina. I wouldn't have been able to explore my own place in this community. So yes, the last part of the shout out is community. Those are two cruxes of my community. But I see a lot of people here that are, so thank you to everyone.
Thank you so much. So as we're going to move into the third question, which is, you know, what do we need to still do here to create a just and equitable community? I want to check in with Laura. Are there questions coming in?
We do not have any yet, so please, if you have specific questions to ask our candidates, please put them in the chat or the comments, depending on where you're tuning in from.
Great, and we were going to do three minutes on this, but I'm wondering, I think we might have enough time to do four minutes for each answer. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't need to take the whole four minutes. People have been really good about finishing when they need to finish, but we can just loosen this up a little bit. And I'm going to just kind of do this a little more randomly than we did in the first two rounds, so we don't have the same pattern over and over again. So third question is, what isn't being done that needs to be done to create a just and equitable Madison for all? And Tessa, I wonder if we could start with you?
I can find the unmute, yes, yeah, definitely. We're all so good because we've been on all these panels that give us two minutes limits. And it's like what I'm trained to speak in two-minute increments now. So what isn't being done? I mean, so many things. I mean, I think that you see this wonderful cohort of people running across Madison for City Council because after the year of 2020, we saw how much we need a just Madison, right? How COVID-19 affected immigrant communities, BIPOC communities, homeless communities, and why we need to step up faster than we've been stepping up. I know that Madison is always working on affordable housing initiatives, green initiatives. But climate change is something that we can't look to fix in 20 years. It's something we need to fix in the next like three years. Stopping PFOS contamination of our well waters. Those are forever chemicals. Once they're there, we're not getting rid of them. And they have long-term health effects, right? They're affecting not just us, but like our next generation, the kids. So what do we need to fix in Madison? Environmental issues, transportation issues. We need to get an actual affordable, good public transit system that allows people to make it from one end of the city to another, to make it between jobs, to make it between communities. It's come up a lot already on this call, but we need affordable housing, right? We need a transition program to get every person who doesn't have a house into a homeless shelter, and then from there into mixed affordable units into housing. I believe the city of Madison needs to look at land back to the Ho-Chang people. We need to seriously think about the fact that we live on stolen land and how we can give that land back and how we can work in collaboration with that government to give them the proper seat at the table and the proper power that they should have in these circumstances. We need to look at what they just did in Evanston, which I was shocked by, which is local reparations, right? Great, how do we do that here? How do we pay back to the communities that have been overpoliced and overtaxed and underserved, right? How do we get rid of the wheel tax? How do we work to develop a Madison that is actually just for all of its residents, which is true police oversight, which is relooking at the budget? It's all of these things. And I know it sounds daunting when we start talking about these issues, right? Like everything's wrong. But honestly, we take it step by step. We look at the budget and we reassess, and as we put people before profits, these other things will follow. If we prioritize racial justice, if we prioritize environmental justice, we'll see that as we fix one issue, we're also solving another issue. And we can bring that together. And at the end of the day, it's going to make a Madison that is stronger and healthier in our communities and safer for everybody who lives here. So thank you, I'll pass with that.
Good, thanks. And, you know, and one of the risks of this question is we're going to have a lot of things that have been, will be said over and over, which is okay. But you can also say, you know, like she said, like he said, but I also want to add, that would be great. So I want to go to Nikki next. Nikki, what do we need to do to make a more just and equitable Madison?
Thanks, Phil, great question. Well, I mean, I think to start off with, representation matters. And I think that's why we're all here, because Madison has not represented the folks who live here, who live, work, and play in Madison. They have not represented us. And I think that's why we have so many people right here on this panel today fighting for representation. We need our seat at the table. I'm going to say a quote from Angela Lang. "You cannot organize black folks if you do not love black folks." Okay, too many times, people are trying to tell us what to do, what's good for us, what we need in our community, without going to the source, without coming to us, without having us at the table, without asking us. You know, it's as far as just, Madison has not provided to make sure that people's basic needs are met. Housing, employment, education, health care. When we have our basic needs met, we're going to be healthier. And when we're healthier, we're going to be safer. So like many of my fellow candidates have already said, healthy communities equal safer communities. When we have our basic needs met, we don't have no reason to go out and commit crimes because we have everything we need. So we need to make sure that we uplift and empower one another and individuals because when we empower and uplift one another, we all rise. And don't we all want to be at the top? It's no fun when we're stepping over people to get to the top. We got to bring everyone along for the ride. And this is how we're going to get it done. Elect us on April 6th, get us to the table, and let us represent you, the ones who know what needs to get done, the one who are closest to the pain, need to be closest to, what's the other part? You know, we got to be closest to the power, that's what it is, I'm sorry. Closest, we're the closest ones to the pain, so let us be the closest ones to the power so we can really represent and bring our community, this city of Madison, justice. Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. Matt, how about you? What would you, what would you list in terms of things we need to be looking at to make Madison a more just and equitable place?
Yeah, well, thanks, Phil. Particularly over the past four years, racial.
Particularly over the past four years, racial inequality has become more stark and more clear than ever before. And now in here tonight, we're having hard discussions about finally trying to get this right. We need a sustained push to ensure better outcomes are achieved. And that means all parts of society, government institutions, business leaders, local leaders and the public, coming together to reform the systems that have created inequality in our society. And especially in local government where policy is debated and created, we need to be intentional with our efforts in creating equitable outcomes for all underrepresented communities, which is an approach that I'm committed to. But to do that, we need to build an inclusive, an inclusive economy and business community that supports more minority owned businesses with, with better business banking services, funding passions and dreams. Then we can also be leveraging the strength of our business and education communities to develop better job and internship programs to provide new opportunities for local youth to, to partner with our great businesses and schools. And let's make sure that not only the next generation, but people looking to change careers have a clear vision of what it's like to have a career in a range of industries. And, but we also need to keep working hard on policing community relationships. I think that all stakeholders need to continue to come together to make concrete policy changes that can happen quickly, that provide more transparency and promote community trust. Many of these issues have been talked about widely, including police worn body cameras, banning chokeholds, requiring de-escalation and requiring comprehensive incident reporting. And at the same time, we need stronger community centers, neighborhood associations and neighbor awareness, making sure that we're all working together to support public safety. We should also be looking for ways to make sure all of our communities have efficient and affordable public transportation options that improve mobility. The current bus rapid transit plan does not include District 16 or the greater east side, which is something that, that I'd be fighting for in upcoming planning discussions. And then lastly, as we recover from the COVID pandemic, we have to make sure that vaccines are effectively and equitably delivered. We have neighbors with limited computer and internet access who are older and less comfortable with, with online registering and vaccine hunting and with limited means and mobility who lack affordable healthcare options. So in many cases, we'll need to deliver vaccine to people where they live, using the vaccination units. And I think that Alders can be a key liaison for their community, working with Dane County, local pharmacies and community health clinics to clearly communicate how and when and where to get vaccinated. So we do have a renewed opportunity to create a more just and equitable Madison. And we all need to work hard together to make sure that that happens.
Great, thanks. Iomi, what do you think we need to be doing here?
Yeah. Um, so I will, you know, first of all, thank you so much Nikki for everything you said. And Matthew said in different ways, but that's really what we need to see here. I will say for, you know, my district, the youth district, what I've noticed especially is that, you know, youth have a lot of this impatient, impatient energy, this usefulness that they're bringing and they need support. And so we've seen that with impacted man, we've seen that over this last summer with being able to go to DC, for example, that was all funded by the community. In my life, I've seen the community support me in ways I've never could have imagined when I went to Madison West till now at UW Madison. And so I think that we really need to continue to empower our youth to do more. I would also say that COVID-19 has exacerbated problems that we've already been seeing in this community. We're talking about affordable housing, transportation specifically. So we're not only trying to do efforts in those areas, but we're trying to expand our vision for what just looks like. So it's not just having more affordable housing. It's not just having more transportation. It's adding sustainability. Let's have electric buses. Let's create more innovative tiny homes, for example. Or, you know, when we're talking about the hub two development that was happening on Linden, when I was on the, the steering committee for that and we were pushing against it, you know, the things that we're talking about was this is not what the community wants. This is not what we need. This is not working for us and they weren't listening. And now we're seeing so much activism mobilize the community in a way that we're showing what we need, we're saying what we need. And I think that we need to have more visionaries and I'm so glad that we have so many Alders who are, I think it takes coalition building, not just within the city. It takes coalition building with Fitchburg, with Milwaukee, with state senators, for example, to build a Madison that we all know in our hearts can be created. We're fighting for a place that we love and we see the vision for it. And so hopefully that has more transportation, affordable housing, teen centers, for example, and which I'm so excited is on our platform to put in the downtown area. And I'm working with Alders in Fitchburg to do more with our youth, youth-led programs. And so, you know, those are a couple, but there's so much more. And I think, you know, what Nikki was saying is really true to what we all need to do is understand that those who are more vulnerable, you know, we understand where legislation continues to fail us. Now allow us to be at the table and show you how it's done.
Great. Thank you, thank you. Benji, over to you. What's, what's missing? What needs to be done to create a more just and equitable community in Madison?
For sure. Let me just finish my walnuts.
Okay, we need more walnuts in Madison. That's the.
We need more walnuts in Madison. Well, one of the things that I would say that we do need is we need more cooperative structures. If we look at the actual organizations and people who have created autonomous, autonomous societies, autonomous nations, autonomous states, it's the Black Panther Party, it's the Batista movement in Southern Chiapas. It's people who are actually coming together to co-create structures that are life-affirming, that are empowering. We see people actually coming together in a way that hasn't previously been able or allowed to be facilitated, right? What we need is we need to take the boot off of our communities of color. We here on stolen Ho-Chunk land are currently amidst an occupation of the settler colonial. So what we need is we need to stop centering whiteness in every decision that we make in the city. We need to stop centering whiteness to actually allow for that pain and trauma that has been, that has arisen from this whole legacy of colonialism to come forward and actually provide the solutions for the people here in the city. We need people to, we need white folk to delineate themselves. They are part of the solution, but they are not the solution. What we need is we need people to actually listen to us and to affirm us and believe in us, recognize us as people. As I wrote for the Cap Times, Dane County will put millions of dollars into incarcerating black bodies, but they will never listen to them. They will never actually prioritize their needs, their pain, their legacy and joy in our city and in our county. And they'll just, again, erase them, step away, move away because it's uncomfortable. So we need to have these very difficult conversations so we can do something, so we can create that equitable society that we keep talking about because we need to reconcile with what equity actually means. It means that my body should be worth as much as your body does. And frankly, here in Madison, here in Dane County, here in Wisconsin, we have such immense disparities. That is not the case. So with that, that's what we need. I know I'm passionate. I know I'm angry. I have every right to be angry.
There you go.
But there it is.
Cool, thank you. Jeanette, how about you? What do you see missing that needs to be done to create a more just and equitable Madison?
I echo pretty much everything that has been said. And, and again, there's, there hasn't been, I don't think, I don't think I have much more room left to, to repeat everything that, that we have heard tonight. So bottom line for me that we need to do, that we really need to do more is put all those words and all those actions, all those words into action. So we need to stop throwing money at one single department expecting different results. So we keep on throwing money to, and then on the, on the name of safety. And we don't see the change. We continue to see crime increase. We continue to complain about that and we continue to, to increase the single budget of the police department instead of actually listen to the experts and listen to the science and acknowledge that having the basic needs of the people served will actually lower violence. Instead of accepting that we need to treat violence as a, as a, just as COVID, as a pandemic, where we need to actually work, look at it from the, from the lens of health and interrupt, find, find where, find those pockets where the illness is and interrupt the violence so we can become safer. Those are the paths that we have been discussing for years and years and years. We used to go library by library here in the city and Fishburg, Verona, and show these, show these videos to show how you can treat violence from a different perspective. And no, people were coming, but leadership wasn't listening. So finally, we have a mandate all the way down from the CDC, all the way down from the state, from Dane County, they're saying we can prevent violence by treating it as a health issue. So let's focus on that. Let's stop talking about all the changes that we need. We need to put the money on it. Let's fund that. Let's fund the Kahoots project. Let's make sure that this budget for real represents the values and the priorities of the city. And right now, the biggest priority that we have is health. We have people, we are under a pandemic. This is, there's, there's no way around that. It's, it's a pandemic, which directly is a health issue. So let's make sure that the money goes to, to, to raise and lift up the people that need our help the most. Like Nikki was saying, I couldn't, I couldn't agree more. When you lift people that, that needs it the most, we all benefit. We all reap the benefits from helping people, marginalized communities. It's not about marginalized community. It's about making the entire community better and safer. So when we help people that need it the most, we all, we all be better for it. So bottom line that we need to do better is deal with this budget and focus, make it, make it a budget that is focused on people's needs. That, that to me is the bottom line.
Cool, great, thank you. Ayesha, how about you? What, what, what's missing that we need to be doing?
Absolutely. So when we're talking about what's missing in Madison, I think there's a couple of things I want to mention, one of which is housing. I am a stand that the city of Madison be a space where housing is a guarantee and homelessness does not exist. It comes down to fundamentally, like we all recognize there is enough space for people. It's just about getting access to those spaces. It's about making sure that the system that controls housing in Madison isn't profit motivated, but instead really cares about housing people and supporting the community and the people that actually live in our community. We don't need any more luxury apartments. What we really need is housing that fits the needs of our community. Secondly, I want to talk about reimagining public safety. How is it that the legacy of policing has created a system that suppresses black and brown people and lives? And we need to really rethink about how it is that we're prioritizing the response teams, the types of crisis response teams that we have in our city. Making sure that the people that are responding to crises are the best, most suited to respond to those types of crises. If somebody is actively suicidal, you would rather somebody who knows how to deal with people in that state of being be there to respond and do something that can actually make a difference than people who are just trained in detaining people show up. Secondly, thirdly, we're talking about protecting the environment. How is it that we're doing that? I think that we need to work to expand other modes of transportation in the city. There's a lot of great work in our public transit system and we need to continue to expand it and make it accessible for everyone. Additionally, we're talking about protecting our environment and our, and community, we need to look at how are we prioritizing flood mitigation in Madison? And that's something that's really important in District 19 in particular, where we saw really bad flooding and it was dangerous. And lastly, when it comes to protecting the environment, we need to be banning hazardous chemicals that are poisoning our waterways. Runoffs such as PFOS are poisoning our water and we need to make sure that we don't have those impacting our waterways. Thank you so much.
Great, thanks, Asia. Juliana, how about for you? What's missing that we need to be working on to make Madison a more just and equitable community?
Oh, I, I knew it was going to come to me at some point, but.
Yes.
Well, okay, Nikki and JL, you got me hyped up. So, um, honestly, I wanted to like just give the mic to you again so I can listen, but you know, it's fine. I guess I gotta go off if you need to go off. What's missing? I, I don't know where to start, but if we're going to put it under one umbrella term, just equity, racial equity and representation is what we're missing in Madison. I find it absolutely really shitty. I'm going to, I'm sorry that I'm cursing, but you know what? That, and I, it scares the crap out of me that I can be sitting in my home right now and a police can walk through my door and shoot me seven times like they, like they did Breonna Taylor and they would get away with it. It scares the hell out of me that they can do my dad like they did George Floyd or that documented students have like, had literally had to drop out of college because they cannot afford to live in Madison. That is, it's, it's insane, it's insane to me. It really ticks me off that this whole F-35 situation that we have going on is happening. And guess what? It's going to affect who? Minority neighborhoods. Transportation issues affects minority neighborhoods, affordable housing, minority neighborhoods. All of these issues that we're talking about, they affect people of color. And I think it's like pretty clear where that is. And like JL said, what you say? We need to have people closest to the pain, need to be closest to the power. When we're talking about Black Lives Matter, when we're talking about stopping Asian hate, we're also talking about ending white supremacy. And like, if, if you are a white person listening to this right now, then you all need to be like supporting these BIPOC candidates with all your might, with everything that you can do. Because you cannot say that you are for racial equity and inclusion and be the roadblock standing in the way of BIPOC candidates getting onto this council, getting the seats that we deserve, that we need to bring about racial equity and inclusion. So, um, I think every single one of these candidates have talked about like what we're missing in Madison, but it's really clear what we're missing. We call ourselves the most liberal city, but really we're the most liberal city and the most racist state. So what are we going to do about it?
You're, you, you really brought the passion to this. Thank you for that. Brandy, how about you?
Okay, I'll try to make sure I don't go over time, Phil. So, um, I, you know, where do we begin? We know we need housing. We know we need affordable housing. We know we need low bear, low barrier homeownership program. And we know we need to build the capacity and support organizations and grassroots organizations to scale it up and out. We know we need to reallocate funds to first responders programs. We know that we got some real tough decisions to make as it relates to our police department and accountability. We know that we need to stop using trending words to look good, right? Because every time someone runs for office, they're talking about equity and justice and reform and trust and building community with the police without an analysis or foundation for understanding what that really means, right? So I'm going to encourage people to vote BIPOC. I don't even like the word BIPOC. I'm going to encourage people to vote black and understand what that means, right? So when we talk about racism, we often like to give it a white face, but I keep telling people racism and white supremacy isn't about race, right? So we have candidates that are running that you may elect because they're black and they actually stand incongruent to the movement of black lives, right? So before we go out in haste and make choices about who we're electing and how we're, how we're, how we're going to get to where we're going, we need to really just stop for a second and look at what people have been causing and creating in our community, right? As leaders and people who say they're leaders, what does it look like to lead? What does it look like to build an analysis? What kind of decisions and conversations and who needs to be at the table to paradigm shift and move away from the status quo? So we have folks who are running, who are masters. So we have folks who are running, who are masters of the status quo, the institution, the way things have been, they've mastered it. And the way um stuff has been is not working, right? Giving um, you know, going with big corporations and big developers to um support affordable housing and producing seventy units that are unaffordable and then saying that that's what we're heading to, towards is not okay. We need permanent affordable housing. We don't need two bedrooms for thirteen hundred dollars a month that I can't afford. Living at fifteen dollars an hour, taking care of two or three kids. We need to be able to get in real conversation about what the change we say we wanna see in our world looks like and how we're gonna get there. But we have to stop tossing out and allowing people to use these trending words and to say Black Lives Matter without the evidence of you actually supporting black lives, right? And we say black lives because we understand that centering those who are the most vulnerable in our population happens to be black people. We actually flip the hierarchy of white supremacy and flip it on its head. So I'm asking people to join us in flipping white supremacy on its head because we don't need any more data to prove that white supremacy is a thing and institutionalized racism is a thing. We know it's a thing, right? And we know that we're not investing in the thing that we say that we wanna uproot and eradicate. We can't allocate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to violence prevention, talking about we're, we're investing in violence prevention while allocating sixty percent of our budget to the police department. When we know the data that we've collected said that the more police you add, the more crime happens, right? So let's really get into discovery of the data that we spent four hundred thousand dollars to collect. But yet we won't spend half of that on, you know, building up communities and prevention uh programming that actually work and providing uh youth programming outside of these huge corporations and nonprofit industrial complexes that we are used to uh funding because they're safe and they're in partnership with the, the big collabora- the, the big folks, the people who control the legislation. We need more partnership between the city and the county because we separate and we can't get work done, but we need collaboration and cooperation across city, county and state level. So we need more partnership there, more legislation, more lobbying, no, more advocacy. And we need the people that can articulate the needs of said people because they actually work with them on the frontline versus folks who work in other positions that have, have no access of points or capital, social capital to engage folks and have that trust that we often say we want as a city with the community that's most vulnerable. So thank you for letting me ask that, answer that question in three point five minutes. I try, I try, I feel that I get it all. I was talking really fast.
So J L, how about you? What's missing? What do we need to do?
Um, so I, I echo a lot of what, what's already been said. And um I actually, just to be vulnerable, had to turn my camera off uh for a bit because in the spirit of listening to my co uh candidates, um got emotional. Um, just kinda thinking about this campaign, this election season that we're, it's coming to a close and Nikki, to echo her words, have been fighting for a seat at the table. Um, talking, Brandy talking about data analysts. I think everyone here has mentioned the intersectionality of our racial and cultural identities and how that can lend itself to every social issue we have in our community. And so um in full transparency and honesty, this is the most safe, respected and comfortable I have felt throughout my campaign. And I believe that's because I'm in community with folks who are connected to me, not just as leaders, um as public servants, but also as, as fellow BIPOC um individuals. And that in itself, being able to be in a space and fighting for a seat at the table, but also fighting for an environment that welcomes and is hospitable um and is leveraging power. I've said it a lot in previous forums. And so I just wanna thank everyone. Um, this has been such a powerful experience for me tonight. Um, I know that there's been lots of forums. I knock on my table, do not have any other forums right now on my calendar. Um, and so I really, i- if this is the end of kind of our group being together, this has been the most humbling way. I think I've talked a lot about leadership and how the ego can feed leadership. And I think this panel here is an example of humility demonstrated in leadership and how leadership of humility saves lives and feeds the soul. And leadership of the ego feeds the status quo and maintaining what we're all here to break. And so I just thank everyone, cause I know this isn't necessarily the easiest thing to hear, especially if you've benefited from power privilege or don't have the perspectives of a lot of us speaking here tonight. Um, I'm, I'm just honored. Uh, so let's keep moving Madison forward.
Thanks so much, J L. Um, that would have been a great closing for the whole thing, but Charlie, you have that, you have to follow that. So Charlie, what would, what would you do? What's missing that we need to make it more just and equitable in Madison?
I'm just um gonna start by putting everything I'm gonna say under a big umbrella of democracy. Um, and I'm going to try not to echo um the very passionate and true and powerful statements everybody said. Been scrambling to think of what else is missing. And I'm going to start, um, it's transparency in our government, a true democracy. These things are missing in our city council. We have, um, I was able last night with our Wisconsin Revolution to um um, listen to Nino Amato talk about the work he's been doing, listening to the alders discussing, should we minimize the voice of the people in Madison? Should we raise exponentially our own salaries? Should we give ourselves pensions? Should we make a board that, let's not tell Madison is mostly made up of us and some of our friends? And then we're gonna give them a report saying these things are good. We don't know these as common citizens. We just see that it's on our ballot. We don't understand that what our current city council is trying to do is eliminate seats at the table for us. They are saying it's in the name of equity. They're saying that they can't afford to run for common council. But we're here, we're doing it. I'm here. My opponent right now is one of the people that is wanting to see some of these things passed on our ballot so that our current common council is not a democracy. It's not a voice of the people. It's not our first foray into telling our government what we want and how we wanna be protected and how we wanna spend our taxes. They're making it an incubator for more politicians to move up into these positions that we've all become so aware, we need to dismantle them. And I think one of the things that is, everybody's touching on it, is the voice of experience. Um, I've often in storytelling said that I may as well, for all of Madison's progressive speak, um, be a ki- uh modern Kitty Genovese, if you know her story from New York. Um, people know what happened to me um at the hands of the police. They know how the police turned their back, how the common council did not represent me or the other ci- citizens that were abused. And the social apathy of our current government is creating the system. And it's, 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 it's creating the environment of racism. And I just, I, I've said it a couple of times in my campaign, but I don't see anybody else neurodiverse or on spectrum or with Asperger's or autism representing what it's like to go through Madison, go through these systems. Just honestly being different than the picket fence protocols that our society has built up. We don't have anybody representing the voice of mental health. I don't wanna call us victims because we're not. We're citizens. We're people that are wired differently. And I think that we need to bring that experience and the way of seeing our world differently to our table. And these things are missing, just an honest representation of the people that live here is missing on our council. Transparency in our government, what is really going on, how are these deals really being made? That's missing in what we're hearing from our common council. And I really would love to rewind and go back to what J L said because the humility displayed here tonight and the commonality of wanting change and wanting bipartisanship um displayed has been an empowering experience, to say the least. So thank you for offering that space to us all.
Great. Thank you. Um, there's still a chance to send in questions. We got about fifteen minutes left. Um, the answers to the questions are gonna need to be shorter than the rounds we've just been through. Um, I wanna pick up with where Charlie ended here about democracy and the council because one of the things Madison is grappling with is, should we change the makeup and the mechanics of the council? I know there are a lot of pieces to that, but Charlie, I just heard you say, no, don't change it. Not in terms of, of numbers of candidates and such. So could everybody else just, you know, in ten seconds, I'm gonna take it right from the top. Do you think things need to change in terms of the structure of the council? Or do we just need to improve what we have? I'm gonna just do this right in order from the tops of Benji. You're gonna be the first one up here and um just quick answers if you can.
Yeah, I think fundamentally, the way that we approach democracy in the city has to change. Because what we've seen is we have seen that the consistent overlooking of marginalized communities. So something has to give. I, I'm in favor of more seats, frankly. I'm in favor of seats that, that do empower people to do this work. And I know you said short answer, so I'm gonna leave it.
Okay, cool. Charlie, we heard you, you're, we know where you are in this. Juliana?
Um, yeah, so if this is in reference to the referendum question.
Yes.
Yeah, so definitely, I think we need to impact, increase the amount of seats that we have. Um, keep it at two years. Um, and I think that's what's best, especially because I'm in a student district. A full-time student can literally by definition not take on the position as a full-time alder for four years. So.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Naomi?
Yeah, so I think we need to definitely improve on what we have. Um, we need some term limits as well. I would add on um in terms of increasing, you know, my priority is the student voice on ca- on, or youth in general, not just UW Madison students. Youth in general, and I don't want um the referendum to, you know, make us lose our seat in the, at the table. So I'll keep it there.
Nikki?
Uh, yes, I am definitely for keeping the number at twenty or increasing it. I do not think we need a decrease at all. Um, term limits, most definitely. I also believe that uh four-year terms would be good because as we know, two years, we can barely get a ordinance passed in two years. It takes time. So I think the terms should run concurrent with the mayor. And um, yeah, I think they should definitely be looked at as full-time. We're gonna give our all to the community. We need to be paid accordingly. Um, so yeah, thank you.
Okay, Jeanette?
Um, I will say that I, there's a lot of change that needs to happen for the council right now. And I'm very looking forward to the default um results on that. So there's many areas of improvement. I'm looking forward to also see the results of the referendum. But um of the, of all the questions that one, the most important thing for me is representation. I, I don't want, I wanna I wanna ensure that that doesn't get compromised. So if we're gonna be paying for elections, if we're gonna put, put something that is, that is like a whole approach to, to changing the current rules, then perhaps we, we can make some changes, but just change it, just without putting systems in place that, that um allows for representation, then I wouldn't be in favor of that. But the one that I'm pretty sure about is the last one, which is the, the, the time, the term. I mean, twelve years is plenty of time. People, as elders, we, our roles should be to do our job, but also to encourage other people to take our seats, to groom other people, to do our jobs, to have all the people represent themselves. So we, there shouldn't, there should be a time limit on it. For that one, I'm sure that it should be, it should be a limit on, on the term.
Right, Tessa?
Um, yes, I'm for the same size or increasing the size uh two-year terms uh for availability of students and renters to be able to represent their districts uh for term limits. For pay, uh, I mean, it all comes down to budgeting. I don't wanna see it taken away from something else. But I think that city alders do need more support from staff and more direct support uh to be able to fully challenge the mayor's office and be a governing body. Uh, and public financing, yes, we see billboards going up all over Madison from developers who want a more conservative Madison. And that's something we shouldn't have, but.
Okay. Okay, Brandy?
Um, okay, so yes, term limit, definitely. I will support like six years. I think people need to get creative, get in and get out. And I also think that two years, it should stay two years, cause people should stay accountable for the promises they make. And you keep people accountable by having the ability to vote them out after two years. I also think we should increase districts. We're focused on um areas that's um, you know, non-white folks. Um, and also, I don't think we should uh make this a permanent full-time position. Um, that's a no-no. Because then you create this space for political careers, right? Where people end up making decisions that align with the mayor's office, cause you don't wanna lose your job and those benefits. And it also becomes inequitable because um folks like me wouldn't be able to run, right? Folks like J L wouldn't be able to run. So who are we talking about when we say equitable? And that's the thing. We like to use these terms to make us look like we're headed in the right direction when actually it moves us in the opposite direction. All the folks that are running today are full-time students, full-time mamas, full-time workers, right? And I don't wanna do this full-time. We should increase the pay though, right? Because you get thirteen thousand dollars, we should increate, create the, cre- increase the pay to include stipends to pay out to administrative assistants. And we also need to cultivate a call center for these calls that usually are funded, funneled to alderpeople like plow and garbage pickup and things that we shouldn't even be answering, right? We should have a better system to, to respond to our community members. And alderpeople need to have the opportunity and space to do more policy analysis and research, which we don't have, which is why we need a whole team backing us. So that's what I will say about that.
Cool, J L?
So I am in support of term limits, um not in support of full-time or uh de- reducing, wow, my words, reducing the amount of alders on the council. Um. Yeah, I'll leave it there. We, we answered this question in a lot of forums.
Yeah, where are you on this?
Admittedly opposed uh to full-time alders. I mean, it would fundamentally reduce the number of opportunities for citizens to serve their community by uh fifty percent. So um I think that um term limits would be fine. I'm always in favor of term limits for every politician. Uh, but I think uh as an alder, what ought to drive you is a desire for, for great neighborhoods and um strong community relationships. So anybody who um wants to do that should be enabled and empowered to run.
Okay, Ayesha? Ayesha?
Yeah, I support uh putting in term limits. Um, I also support increasing the terms to four years so that uh legis- or so policies and ordinance actually have the opportunity to really get passed. Um, and um when it comes to um oh man, I just forgot, when it comes to, when it comes to increasing to a full-time and then in there for a decrease in the amount of alders, I do not support that. I think what's trying to be addressed there is the recognition that this is uh, it's difficult to get into this position and then to not make a full-time um salary is also really difficult. Or I've heard um from incumbents, it's really difficult on um young people and people of color. When honestly, I think what would be a better way to address like the ability to break through and become an elected official is a public financing option to keep big money out of politics and really be able to regulate how money is used in campaigning would make it more accessible to those groups of people that they're claiming to be.
So we kind of probably get one more question in here and, you know, maybe this is, this is a, a complicated question which needs a short answer. And I'm gonna do reverse order. So Ayesha, I'm gonna start with you. So hang on. What, oh wait, that's, that's the question we asked you for. If you could pass one piece of legislation that addresses one tangible issue through the council, so far so good, without any opposition, oops, what would it be? One thing that you could get unanimous support on through the council?
Guaranteed housing, having housing available to everyone in the city of Madison.
Okay, cool. How about Matt? One, one thing that you could get through the council and you think you could get it through unanimously?
Any kind of, uh, I'm kinda piggybacking, but any type of zoning change or that would increase the supply of multi-tenant housing that would help, that will in, in and of itself help affordable housing.
Okay, J L?
Access to free legal representation when facing eviction.
Hmm. Brandy?
Um, cutting the police budget and funding the things that we need. That's what I would pass, funding the things that we need.
Okay, Tessa?
Well, I have to admit that J L uh said what I was gonna say, so I gotta come up with something else. Um, I, I would enact participatory budgeting so that communities have control over where that budget goes uh cause that will then move to solve the other issues, so.
Okay, good. Jeanette, one, one piece of legislation that addresses a tangible issue that you could get through the council unopposed?
Hey, I would like to get these shelters so um vo- vote in there. Like, I don't, I don't even understand what's happening. Why are we back pedaling on that? I mean, it's, it's a one little tiny piece of the I mean, it's, it's a one little tiny piece of the puzzle, but it's extremely, it's a, it's an urgent, urgent thing to handle right now. Deal with the shelter.
Good, okay. Nikki?
Well, everyone already said everything I was thinking of, but.
You're running out of unanimous issue, right?
I know. I mean, that, hello, that should tell you some. Um, but no, I really think um, increasing the educational opportunities. Um, we need more opportunities for our black children. Um, and we need to close those opportunity gaps and make sure that black kids have what they need in order to be successful because they're our future, so.
Good, okay. Naomi?
Um, I'm already excited to see how we're all agreeing on so many different things, ready to work with y'all. Um, but I would say a teen center downtown is necessary. It's, you know, we've seen so many young people fight for justice and do so many historic things in the past year with them violence, with Black Lives Matter. So we need a space and I'm, you know, working with other groups in Pittsburgh and, but yeah, teen center.
Great. Juliana?
Um, increasing the funding for the crisis response team.
Good, good. And, and she also noted that, that the agenda can pass with unanimous consent. So there you go. Charlie?
Um, I'm just gonna answer this as though we were in a utopian world and city council could address this. I would um, legalize THC at the retail level and get rid of all of this back and forth we've been wasting our time and money on. And that's what I would hope to pass.
Good. And Benji, bring us home.
Well, in much the same spirit as JL's um, providing legal counsel for people facing evictions, I would say we would need to provide legal counsel for uh, immigrants facing immigration court cases because who's protecting our immigrants? Who's protecting the backbone of the dairy state's labor market?
Great. Lots of things to be tackled here. I, this has been a wonderful conversation. Thanks to everyone. I, I love the fact that we could be a little broader in the kinds of answers people were giving because you weren't like necessarily debating your opponent, although I heard a little bit of that come through here and there, but um, you know, mostly this was, let, let's think about what are we doing right? And then what do we need to do better? Because we're not doing everything right, that's for sure. So thanks to all the candidates for being here. Um, thanks to Laura for doing the tech stuff to keep us all running through all this and, and setting it up. Um, those of us at Just Dane are really happy that we could bring you all together for this conversation. There will be other Just conversations coming in the future, so keep an eye on Facebook for those. And thanks to all of you who, who joined us either on Zoom or on Facebook. Um, let's keep this conversation going. It doesn't stop with the election. Take care, everybody.